Okay. Good evening Mahopac community and welcome to our special, our special meeting, Board of Education meeting for this evening. What I'd like to do right now is I'd like to entertain a motion to open this meeting.
I'm moved.
I'm moved.
You Adam, second please.
Second.
Second.
Thank you Ben, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, thank you so very much Mahopac community. Well, as advertised and as we, as we spoke about last week, we, we knew that good news was going to be on the horizon. I'm not going to spoil this, this surprise for everybody. So what I'd like to do right now is I'd like to introduce our superintendent of schools, Mr. Anthony DeCarlo, to discuss the, the proposed in-person reentry plan for our students at, in Mahopac Central School District. Anthony, take it away.
Anthony, you're on mute.
Thank you President Magan. And as you mentioned, it's a reentry plan. As I mentioned on Wednesday night, we have been reopened and have been open since the end of last September and into October. So it's, it's important for everybody to understand that. So I, I thank you. A couple of things before we get into the presentation itself while Melody brings it up. It's really important to understand a number of things that since this pandemic happened last March, myself, my cabinet, administrative team, we, we have been working literally almost 24/7 and trying to follow the guidelines and the events that were happening throughout the pandemic. And with that being said, along the way, we have had meetings, both regular meetings, work sessions, special meetings, there's been spotlights, there's been Friday unpackets, and all along the way, we've been guided along the way by legal. So it's important to understand that myself, the cabinet and the board, along with our journey, have asked a lot of questions at times when we did not understand certain things that were happening. We would, we would refer back to our legal team who would clarify what the governor orders meant or didn't mean, or meant or waited for there to be a certain guidance that we had to abide by. Because a lot of times the governor would give an executive order during a press conference, but then not for weeks come out with really what the order meant. So when we talk about being transparent and communicating, we've done that all along. We knew that February 12th, and if we go to the slide on the first slide, we knew that February 12th would be one of those days that would really be important for us to look at because on a national level, we had heard that the CDC was going to be issuing new guidelines because of the pressure that was happening to open schools across the country. Once we got that guidance, there were a lot of discussions on, in the lower Hudson region, which we are in, as to what that guidance was or wasn't and what school jurisdictions could do or couldn't do. Well, as conversations went on at a state level, and I want to thank the community for their advocacy because of writing letters and speaking to our elected officials, both on a local level and state level, there really began to be a lot of pressure on the governor's office as well as the New York State DOH into really what schools could do to be able to start to get more of our kids to come back into our, our programs. And with that being said, you know, we continue to work with the local Department of Health and we're at the point today that we can roll out what that will look like over the next number of weeks as we get ready to start to welcome back our students. It's important to understand that as we begin to look at this, this is, these are targeted dates. What is, what do I mean by targeted dates? These are not locked in stone for a number of reasons. Number one, we have placed orders for this additional safeguards that have to come in. Number two, we have to have time to be able to get desks and other things out of storage and put them in classrooms. We need to circle back with our teachers and our administrators as we get ready to welcome students back. So what I'm presenting to you right now are targeted dates. We're anticipating that this is what we will be able to do if everything falls into line. Of course, I'm not going to let you know the day before if there happens to be a problem, you'll get notification way in advance should we see something really stemming or percolating with regards to it. So let me start with our first bullet. We are targeting Wednesday, March 17th, that's two weeks from today, for our K to 12 IEP students to return to the Mahopac Central School District. I will turn it over to Dr. Stowell, who will tell you a little bit about the work that we've done in preparation for this, what some of those next steps will be with our IEP parents, so that everybody has a clearer understanding to what that will look like on, or on March 17th. Dr. Stowell?
Thank you, Mr. DeCarlo. Pleased to announce that we've been doing some work over the past couple of weeks to prepare for this opportunity to have all in district students with current 2020, 21 IEPs to return to school full time. There's a couple of things that I, I just want to make sure our community of parents and guardians of students with current IEPs know that in order for our buildings to prepare for students with IEPs to return safely to the school, and so that our transportation department and food service departments can prepare for the additional daily enrollment, we are going to be sending out a survey this Friday. The couple of things that we need to know are the following. The purpose of this survey is to identify parents and guardian selection in the following three areas. Knowing full well that given a new physical distancing protocol that will ultimately be in place, and Mr. DeCarlo will get back to later, we, we need to know whether parents are going to elect to send their kids in full time, or whether they're going to elect to have their children learn remotely. At this point, there will be no hybrid option for current students with IEPs who are in in district programs. The second thing that this survey will ask our parents is to indicate if they plan on using district transportation at any time, or whether they intend to drive their children into and from school, or if they have a high school student with an IEP who is allowed to drive, whether that student will be driving themselves. And lastly, we want to know whether or not they intend to access the district's food service for lunch. All of these things in this survey that'll go out Friday, which we believe will be due by the 10th, will allow us to prepare. Couple of things that I think that are important for our families of students who have IEPs to know. While they return on the 17th, at first, there will be, we will be able to maintain our six feet of distancing, but please know with the increased volume and enrollment in our classes, at some locations, we may need to switch classes, or classrooms, I should say. We already looked at this, there are going to be some switches. And the building principals will be able to talk a little bit about that. And again, there's just some smaller rooms that we need to relocate to larger locations. The other thing that we, I want parents to know before they made these selections is now, one of the mitigation strategies of cohorting is no longer going to be in play. So now you're going to have students with IEPs that are going to be across both cohorts. And that means that there is more of a chance that if there is a known positive, that there will be more contact tracing. And let, and third, please know, you know, at this time, there may be some increased density on our buses. So please know that a survey will be sent out to those families specifically on Friday, this Friday coming up, due by the 10th. What we're going to do is once we get everybody in, have a little bit of time to acclimate, I'm going to be holding an information session for parents to ask questions once their students return. Mr. Carlo, thank you for the time. And we do look forward to having our students with IEPs be able to return five days a week.
Thank you, Dr. Stowell. So it's really important, and we're excited that we're able to do that on March 17th. Before I go into the secondary and elementary schools, this is really important to understand. And again, a lot of work was done this week with meeting with our doctors, meeting with our DOH cabinet and principals. And one of the things that made sense is we wanted to make sure we had barriers that were appropriate at different levels. So in our K to five elementary schools, we will be using desk barriers. They are tri-fold, a polycarbonate that will be put on each one of the desks for our K to five students. What's nice about that is it's there, it'll be on the desk, they can clip on, and they'll be in the classrooms. Those, you know, of course are, take some time to come in and be able to be put up, and we want to make sure that we're doing it with our staffs. And we're going to look to do a lot of that work during that spring break, get everything ready to go. And so we'll be able to target those dates as you can see. Some people are going to say, Mr. DeCarlo, why would the secondary be coming in first? Because we're able to accommodate them sooner. And here's a couple of things. Especially in our high school, our cohorts are not well attended. We have a lot of students that are, are remote. And so there's a real good possibility that we will be able to bring them in, and the six to 12 will be marrying face shields to be able to do that. As we know, you know, K to five, there's not as much transmission, but there are with the older kids, and the, the face shields are, are more appropriate and something we could get sooner. So we want to bring those kids. And also, we have to remember, our high schoolers are still taking Regents, they're still taking college-level classes, and that, that time with their teachers is really, really important. So our goal is to return our six to 12 students the week of April 5th. Now you're asking, why the week of? Once again, we want to make sure that we have everything in over the break, that we have our rooms set up. And as soon as that all happens, you know, we will let you know the specifics of what date that week it will look like. And then what we want to do, and there was some discussion about this, and it worked out really well when we, we opened our schools back up for the school year, how we brought students in, bringing them in on specific days. So you will see that we may have to, we may do sixth grade one day, seventh grade and eighth grade another, only because it gives us time to work with that specific grade level, look at our traffic patterns, get the kids situated and set up, run our new lunch, what that looks like with more kids, and then reexamine each day what we did well and what we get, need to prepare for the, the second and third day. The same thing would be happening in our elementary schools, having our K to one students in first, who are most fragile, working with them for those first two days, evaluating that over the weekend, then getting ready to welcome in our second and third graders for two days, evaluating that, and then ultimately our fourth and fifth graders, and then everybody, of course, will be back by April 16th with the projected timeline. So that's the overview. Again, we're hoping we meet those targets, but again, there could be things that could happen with supplies and things that could take place that we may have to, you know, adjust, but for right now, that's what we are looking at. Tasks, and this is really important, I'm going to let Mr. Tremblay kind of talk to you a little bit about this. So the question is, well, you just sent out a survey. Well, that was the initial survey because we wanted to see what those percentages are. Mr. Tremblay can talk to you a little bit about that. And now the fact that we really need to dig more because it's going to really have an impact on what those numbers are at each level and what some of those things, as Dr. Stowell said, that we have to look at with busing, with schedules, with, with room usage. So, Mr. Tremblay?
Thank you, Mr. DeCarlo. And to echo what Dr. Stole said, in needing to gather information on parents' preferred learning modality for their students, we will be sending out a similar survey for all of our general education students after Dr. Stole's team has a chance to send out that survey and collect the data and analyze. We want to make sure there's enough time between the two surveys so that there's no confusion on behalf of the public with filling out either one of those surveys to annotate their preference. So in a similar way, we'll be sending out a survey, asking the parents to complete a survey for each child in their household in general education, identifying the preferred learning modality, whether it be in-person or remote, there will be no hybrid opportunity at this time going forward, and then also indicating transportation preferences and also indicating food service preferences. So that survey will be forthcoming as well.
Thank you, Mr. Tremblay. And of course, we're really working hard and with our, or all of our staffs and specifically our teachers, as we get more and more vaccinated each day. I actually reached out yesterday to the Potomac County DOH, and today we, myself and Dr. Stowell got an email about more vaccines coming our way, and we sent it out to those teachers who were still interested and hadn't been able to secure a time slot. So we are really, really working hard because that, as I mentioned to you, was really a big factor in starting to get schools and specifically our school district to bring back everybody in a, a reentry plan. As I mentioned to you, there is a lot of furniture that's in storage that has to begin to be taken out of storage and placed back in our, our classrooms, talking about the arrival of our barriers and face shields over the next number of weeks to be able to make that happen. And of course, taking those desk shields in the elementary schools and beginning them to install them on our desks. That's really a lot of the work that's going to be done over the next several weeks. Now, again, a lot of discussion about, well, if this happens, are certain things going to be able to go away and, and things change that we know that have been happening since last March? First of all, all face masks, as we know, as we're wearing now, will continue to be worn at all times with the exception of lunch. So there's no change to that. Social distancing, depending on the room, will be modified from three to six feet, depending on the, the square footage of that particular room. Polycarbonate desk barriers will be used in grades K to five, as I mentioned, face shields will be used in grades six to 10. This is also important. We continue the procedures that we're doing with the easy screen and temperature checks for our, our students upon entry into school. None of that will be changing, we'll be doing those same protocols as we go through. Now, as we gather the survey information and we go to our full reentry, we're now looking at adjustments that are going to be made with regards to what things are going to look like. For example, and it was mentioned before by Dr. Stowell and Mr. Tremblay, school schedules may change, and the fact that it depends on what and how many people are going to be driving their child to school. So, you know, a period may not start exactly on time, there may have to be some adjustments as we adjust to schedules and drop-offs and pick-ups because we're going to have more people on the road. With that being said, transportation schedules are going to change, we're going to have more students, most likely, on bus routes, and therefore, those schedules may have to be adopted. Classroom locations, as Dr. Stowell mentioned, they'll be limited, but depending on some square footage and the survey of how many kids may be in a certain class or section, we may have to switch some classrooms K to 12, depending on what those needs present themselves. Teacher assignments, again, that depends on specifics, that depends on amount of kids and what's happening. There may have to be some changes with regards to that. That all depends on what that looks like in the surveys, again, sections and classes, again, that would be on a very limited basis, but it could happen, and I think the public needs to be aware of that and understand that. Movement in, in the school and hallways. So here's what's really important. Even though we're going to six to three feet, that does not stop the proximity contacting, the contact tracing. We may have to stagger movements in our hallways where the bell rings and everybody goes out. It may mean that this team at, you know, goes into the hallway at this time, two minutes later, the next team. So there are going to be, have to be adjustments that are done. Everybody can't be in the hallway at once. In the elementary school, you may have a gym class that one class has to leave earlier, so they're in the hall and out while another one comes in. So those are the things that I mean by movements within the classrooms and in our buildings, because we still have to do some of these mitigation techniques because we can't have massive amount of kids in our hallways at one time. And also, we have to make sure, and the, and the CDC says this, we have to continually monitor our positivity rate. If that positivity rate starts to climb and go up, that could trigger us going back to a hybrid model. I don't want to see it, I don't think anybody wants to see it, but it needs to be stated that if for some reason, we get to zoom up again like we did after Halloween, right through January, that could and will trigger us having to go back to our hybrid model. But it's really important for people to understand that. And that does not also mean that there's not going to be any contact tracing. There may be more cases of contact tracing because there's more kids together in a classroom. That does not stop it from happening. Again, it's the springtime, we're going to have more windows open, you know, we're going to be able to have more air circulating, and we work very closely, Dr. Stowell, Mr. Tremblay, Mr. Billu, on each case, work closely, and a lot of those factors are determined as to who and the amount of individuals that may or may not need to be quarantined. Again, if your son or daughter right now is in a classroom with six or seven kids, you know, they have some mobility to move around. Once we now go to 17, 18 kids, there's not going to be as much movement, and that's something that comes with, you know, having more kids in the classroom. Our food service program, for the most part, will be grab and go, and this is really important to understand. And Sandra, maybe you can speak to this, that everybody is entitled to a free lunch? So if you wouldn't mind kind of explaining to all of our families on what those options are?
Sure. So the US government had determined that all students would receive free lunch for the, first it was through December, and then it was extended through June. So at this time, regardless of income, every student is entitled to receive a lunch when they're in school. They will get it depending on each delivery of method at each building. And then for remote students, we still offer a pickup option. We do that twice a week. There's also, if you see in the newsletter, there's also the ability to contact United Way. They are delivering lunches to students who cannot come pick them up. The pickup is usually, I said, twice a week, and it does vary depending on whether, weather has changed some dates and when we have half-days and things like that. But again, it's available to everyone. For anyone to take a lunch, it does not take anything away from anyone else. Some comments in a previous survey were that we, you know, we're, you're happy we're doing this and, but you want to leave it for those in need, just realize that this is for everyone, it is not restricted by income. And so please utilize the program, you know, if you'd like to, because we are here to provide that to all students.
Thank you, Ms. Clovisi. And then we go back to what I mentioned, not only in the class, but on buses, and this is really important to understand, parents, if you're going to be using our buses, really, as we go into the spring and we know there's cool mornings, make sure your son or daughter is dressed appropriately, because it's really important that we keep our bus windows open and our hatches open, because that air circulation really helps with limiting the amount of students that may have to be quarantined. Again, it's really very important to understand that. It's not going to negate people being quarantined, but we want to try to lessen it to the extent that we can. And those bus windows being open and hatches being open help out tremendously. So, you know, as we get into the, you know, the spring and those early mornings, please make sure your son or daughter has a spring jacket on, because we are going to have those, you know, those windows open, because as I said, it's very helpful for us if for some reason, somebody should test positive. We don't want to have to lose the entire bus. So please note that. And as I mentioned, in order for this to, to really be effective, we as a community have to continue to do what we've been doing. We cannot start to take things for granted and decide we're not going to wear masks out and about, or we're, you know, we're going to start to mingle in with people that we're not familiar with or we don't know. That will cause the uptick, therefore, the positivity rate going up, and therefore then limiting us to be able to continue with having everybody re-entered fully, and we don't want to have to go back to that, that hybrid model. So that community support is going to be so important as we head through, you know, the final months of the school year. We need to remain diligent on all our safety protocols and follow those guidelines that we have been following ever since the pandemic begun. So thank you for that, and I continue to encourage you to do that. So forthcoming information, and you, you heard a little bit about that from Dr. Stowell and from Mr. Tremblay. So there will be a series of informational videos that are going to be put together by our principals and their, and their leadership teams to each one of your specific buildings, and kind of walk you through what a day will look like, what things are going to be happening in school. They'll talk to you about morning and dismissal, drop-off, and things that you can do to help us expedite, make the processes as smooth as possible. And you'll be getting a link and receive an email for those informational videos as we get closer to welcoming those students back on those dates that we had targeted in the beginning of the presentation. Dr. Stowell mentioned that he's going to be hosting informational sessions coming up as we welcome our K-12 special education students back with IEPs. And that's what really important is that I will be continuing over the next couple of weeks to update you, to remind you about our reentry plans, about, you know, having everybody stay safe and working together, you know, talking about welcoming students back in that social, emotional point of view, and be sharing those videos with you, and of course, doing my spotlights and my, my weekly updates. What's really so important is that, you know, everybody understands we need time to get ready for this. And that's why last week at our work session, we talked about, you know, March 10th and March 24th as days that our faculty has, wants to work closely with our building principals in beginning to welcome our students back and the things that we have to do, not only from a health and safety point of view, but also an instructional point of view. And, and that's the purpose for those days coming up in the month of March. And then lastly, a, a number of shout-outs and thank-yous. First of all, you know, to our, to our staff, to everybody, to our teachers, our custodians, our aides, our monitors, our secretaries, our bus drivers, our, our bus aides, their dedication and time and patience and collaboration over these last, this year, has just been something that's just been very, very touching and heartwarming, because we couldn't do some of the things that we've done along the way, getting our kids back and trying to the best of our ability under a pandemic, do the best that we possibly can. So I want to thank the incredible dedicated staff. Our parents, I know there's been ups and downs, and there's been a lot of, you know, questions and, and upsetment about protocols and things that should or shouldn't be done. But at the end of it, you know, we're all here because we all want what's best for our kids, and we'll get there. I think by, by doing this over the last two and a half months of the school year, beginning to welcome kids back, get them connected, supporting them academically, supporting them socially, emotionally. Mr. Tremblay is going to tell you a little bit right now about some of our wanderings and what we're looking at possibly doing over the, the summer. Mr. Tremblay, would you just mind kind of giving a little overview of what we've begun to do and look at?
Yes, as, as I mentioned last week, we've continued discussions, exploring with, with some of our key stakeholders who would be providing some of the summer programs, planning with them before we, we put in place large-scale planning and then sharing out of plans. We've been looking at some of the possible options we would have for summer programs, including, and again, our main purpose of these would be to address students' social, emotional wellness, to also address any skill development that we would have been missed from the academic standpoint, or needs to be reinforced, and then also to instill a love of, a joy of learning again for many students who have not been in a school building or in quote-unquote "normal" school building for a number of months. So we're continuing those plans, we're looking at considerations such as budget, staffing, criteria for, for entry and capacity of what we can do, because if we're nearing the summer and we still are, are, have strict guidelines in terms of what we can do within our buildings, we have to consider if we want to go down a remote path as well, which of course, we prefer to have our teams in person for this particular program. So we'll continue to keep people updated as we have these conversations, as we address some of the problems that we need to explore to make sure that this is, that could be a possibility to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Tremblay. And then of course, our students, you know, their, their, their stick-to-it-ness, their smiles, their, their eagerness to come in when they aren't, you know, their, their difficulties and ups and downs, you know, with regards to this and being, having to be sometimes not in school because of contact tracing, not knowing what was going to happen with, with extracurricular. not knowing what was going to happen with extracurricular activities and sports and the like. And we've been able to do that. And I go up and I see these student athletes, I go up and see the, you know, sticking my head into the kids who are practicing theater and orchestra and band. You know, hopefully welcoming back our students that are in marching band when we go to our, you know, hopefully football season in a couple of weeks. So you're starting to see those smiles. We're working on having a prom this year. We're looking at graduation, being back on the turf. So things are beginning to change. And as we work through the next number of months and get some of these things more solidified as we get more guidance, you know, we'll be updating you on that. So we're trying to get back to whatever that normal used to be, knowing it will never be that way. At least for this school year, we have to make some of these adjustments. But we're hoping getting kids back academically, socially, emotionally will be that first starting off point as we try to get back to the normality of what our lives were prior to last March. And then last but not least, our Board of Education, I know for myself, the cabinet, you know, the leadership teams in the buildings, the teachers, you know, we thank you for your incredible support. It's not been easy on you either. We've never been through this before. I mean, Mr. President says all the time, he thanks everybody. And people need to understand, I mean, you know, it's been difficult on all of us, but there have been days and weekends and holidays where administrators have been working 24/7 because of contact tracing and trying to always do the best they can to make sure that we get as many kids to stay in school. And, you know, we know that you are, as a community, want your students back in. We saw the survey and now we're ready to do that. So I'm excited. I think we're all excited about having this next new chapter for the 21, 22 school year. And I thank the board for giving us an opportunity tonight to roll out this plan to you. And again, thank you for all your support and all you do. Mr. President, back to you.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you very much Superintendent DeCarlo and to the leadership team and to our administrators. So thank you again, as I've always done, for all that you guys and gals do for us. Mr. DeCarlo, would it be okay, would it be okay to, for a couple of questions?
Sure. Yeah, and the team, the team will feel free to respond.
Yes, please, that would be great. So I just, I mean, if I could lead it off and sorry to jump in, but if it's, so Anthony, so like the, from the contract tracing point, do you, on the contract tracing, I have two questions. Contract tracing, you know, are there any changes in the contract tracing since we're going to go with the masks and face shield and the dividers? Does that, are we in better standing or is it just going to be the same, you know, the same thing?
I'll turn that over to Greg because Greg has really worked closely with DOH and Shanna on this. Greg, if you don't mind?
Sure, Mr. DeCarlo. There has been no changes to the contact tracing other than we do a little bit more depth investigation about time that has been in close proximity. But as you have more, Mr. DeCarlo mentioned, as we have more and more students in and everybody's in, there's no longer a cohort. So it's not like, hey, I was in Monday and Tuesday, contact tracing started Wednesday, so phew, I'm okay, I can come back. That may mean that a whole classroom may go down. So, so no, nothing has changed. The actually polycarbonate, just to be honest, the polycarbonate death shields do not change anything with respect to contact tracing and nor does the face shields. I will say though, that the face shields, we know that if you look at the medical profession, in terms of less of a risk for transmission, we believe, again, there's not a lot of research on that, but there is some, we believe that the face shields, and that's why secondary students were electing to go with face shields. But in terms of contact tracing, the short answer is no. We hope that the positivity rate is lower, so therefore the likelihood of having to contact trace will be lower.
And Greg, just once, and Anthony and Greg, if you wouldn't mind, so just, not the Bible, but maybe a chapter. So what is the, so what's the meat and potatoes of the contract? Like, I'm in a classroom, I'm sitting next to Anthony, we're six feet apart, we've got our mask on, we've got our face shield on, you know, what would be the, you know, how long do we have to be in contact? How long do we have to be in that, in the class? What is the, you know, what is the meat and potatoes of the exposure?
I wish it was a simple Cliff Notes version of an answer because a lot has to depend on how many students were in that classroom because that talks about how much airflow, were the windows open, were the doors open? Do you have a MERV-13 filter, which we don't have because our systems are older? So in general, the first layer is, the first layer is, were you in there more or less than 60 minutes? Were the windows open and how many people? And then we have to do an investigation of, like, this is the painstaking work that the administrators have been doing with the Department of Health about where was the known positive, how close were they, how long? So it's, there is no simple answer other than, you know, closer proximal contact with a known positive, depends on the amount of time, over 10 minutes. So if it's less than 10 minutes in a 24-hour period, you don't have to worry about it. But other than that, it takes a long time about investigation. I know Mr. Tremblay has been working hard on it too, and I know he's going to make my answer better.
No, I'm not going to make your answer better, just add on to it for perspective of the community, of course, the board and the community. Just a reminder that with more students in, our administrators now have more students that we want to make sure we're keeping safe, we're supporting during the school day. So keep in mind that that contact tracing is only going to be an added burden with more students in. So that, as we've seen in Department of Health, when we first started this, the Department of Health, when there was smaller, smaller number of cases, they could spend more time really detailing, doing that work, doing a deep dive investigation. And while we will make every effort to do a deep dive investigation, we also have to be mindful of the time that the administrators need to spend on the normal day-to-day task of administering and running a building when it comes to the in-depth contact tracing we do. So we're working with the Department of Health on best practices that they recommend. And so that will be ongoing and evolving as well, too.
Okay. And Anthony, also, Anthony, the windows will be open at school, is that correct?
Yeah, so Mike, to your point, right, to your point, it's not just buses. So I think people need to understand that, right? So when you're coming to school and you, you know, I'm not asking you to be a meteorologist, but try to see what the weather is because to the best of our ability, President Morgan, we're going to keep windows open and doors open so that we could cut down possibly than the amount depending on the timeframe. So like, if you listen to what Dr. Stowell just said, a lot of times, that's why in your elementary, because those kids are in class all the time, right? They're not moving. So, you know, so therefore, because of the amount of time and contact, those kids are together all day long. So that's why sometimes you may see a high school or middle school class where it's not everybody, depending on where that student was and how many kids were with him, above and beyond what those requirements for time are.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you. Board members?
Can I, can I ask quick?
Go ahead, go ahead, Vice President.
First, to the administrative team, thank you for all your hard work, time and efforts on this and for getting this, getting this into works. It's a huge step and it's a huge win for our children. To inquire about the face shields, they're be worn all day long, including while they're eating lunch, doing gym, and so forth? Or is there guidelines for that?
Greg?
So the, you know, obviously you can't wear a face shield when you're eating lunch or drinking something. It's kind of impossible. So no, we're going to have, one of the things, Vice President Savino, is we're going to have to look at what lunch, where eating spaces look like. That's some of the work that Mr. DeCarlo talked about that's still ongoing based upon how many students we expect to be going full-time, which will then require the kind of spacing we need where kids eat. In the middle school, in the elementary school, they eat in their classrooms, right? In the high school, they eat in the library and the cafeteria. So we're going to have to look at it. So no, we don't expect face shields to be on at the secondary when kids are eating. But when they're in classrooms and there's less than six feet of spacing, absolutely. So they will have those face shields. The other thing is, and their masks, so it's masks and face shields, not just face shields. Face shields are not a substitute for masks, but worn together, they are a protective barrier. And then the second part is in physical education, right? We still need 12 feet if kids are respirating and, you know, if they're 12 feet apart, they will not wear their face shield. The reason, again, we chose face shields because they're safer, number one. Number two, secondary students move around a lot more different locations, so they're very portable and something that students can carry, you know, on their person without it being too much of a burden, as opposed to them carrying around some sort of barrier as well.
Excellent.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Stowell. And also, Vice President Savino, we're going to be putting a lot more tables and stuff outside at the high school so kids can go out and eat, which will help out tremendously. So we're looking at everything we possibly could do to try to expedite not having to quarantine. God forbid somebody does test positive.
Okay, great. And one more follow-up on the elementary level, actually secondary as well, as it applies to specials, art, music, band. Are we gonna, are we going to be getting back into that at all or is that still further down the road?
Mike?
So great question. And I know that there's plenty of questions that may be asked. I don't want to make a choice to come in in-person or remote until I know what it's going to look like. That's why Mr. DeCarlo detailed the large overview of what we are planning to do here. Because a lot of the questions we're going to answer at our buildings will vary between buildings and vary depending upon the number of students who elect to come in. So that, again, is some of that work that will need to be done. Once we see the numbers coming in, principals and their team can then look at the square footage with the number of students coming in. Do we need to move in our room? Do we need to do a remote room here? Those are the types of questions we'll have better answers for as we get closer once we know better numbers.
Excellent, thank you, thank you again. We look forward to those updates.
Trustee Masafra, Senior Trustee Masafra, go.
Thank you so much. I just want to say, Anthony and Assistant Superintendent, I just want to say thank you for this plan. I wish we could have had students come back sooner. But as you said, we needed to follow the state guidelines. And we've been as transparent as possible as a board. And I know the Assistant Superintendent and Anthony, you have also been very transparent in your spotlight and the best, as soon as you received your information, you passed it along to us and to the community. So I just want to say thank you for that. I also wanted to say I'm glad to hear that we have plans for our graduation and proms. I think that's very important, highlights of our juniors and seniors. So I'm glad to hear about that. The other thing I wanted to ask about, the survey that's going out on Friday, could that be shared with the board so that we're aware of what type of questions are being asked about parents and community? And then also the summer school, when do we think we'll have a timeline on that?
Mike, you could say whether you're working on now and what we're going to be doing along the way?
So what we're doing right now is we're asking for a group of teachers to help join us in planning what the, what the specific, for lack of a better term, curriculum of that summer school might look like. We also have to make sure that we have a budget for that. So that's going to be tied in part to the budget process, which we'll be discussing with the board in our upcoming sessions. That will also dictate the number of students that we can then have and offer this to, which will then also dictate the staffing. So there's a lot of steps involved. And I'd say it's probably going to mirror right along with the budget process and definitely be communicated to parents as soon as we know it's going to be able to be supported. Now, this summer, this possible summer program is in addition to any ESY program or our ENL programs that we offer on the regular summer breaks as well.
Okay, and I also see that Regents, there's going to be a discussion whether or not Regents are going to be given this June. So I know in years past, we've offered Regents in August to help us students. You know, if, whatever the reason may be that Regents is not passed and it's needed for graduation, I hope we reconsider doing that again for our students in August.
Mike, do you want to give an update on what's going on with ESA and the Regents? That would be great. And Trustee Masafra, in the board update, you will get a copy of the survey sent out. Mr. Tremblay, you're welcome.
Mr. Carl, yes, excellent question. So as mentioned last week, we're still in that area where New York State has sent a waiver to the Federal Department of Education asking to have assessments such as the New York State Regents or the three-through-eight ELA math and science for an eighth science exam waived this year due to the circumstances. The Biden administration has hinted that they are unwilling to do that, but may give flexibility in how states administer this program. The second part of the New York State waiver is that key piece, that they are requesting for some flexibility in how to do that. In addition to that, there are some Regents that the New York State Board of Regents has oversight on that are not covered by the federal compliance and accountability testing program. So, but that needs to be taken upon by action by the New York State Board of Regents. They released a memo, I believe, just yesterday that indicated that they will be discussing as a Board of Regents at their upcoming meeting, the possibility of eliminating those June exams. Just like in January, there was a different approach into the June Regents. I believe that the New York State Board of Regents will have to give future guidance on what's going to occur for the August Regents. And we'll keep the board updated and the community updated on that.
Okay, thank you.
So Trustee Masafra, probably at the March board meeting, we'll have an update from the Board of Regents and we'll be able to share that then, so thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Nice, nice. Okay, Trustee, Trustee DeLulo, Ben, jump in.
Okay, so just want to continue the love fest. Thank you very much from the board, from me, for all the work that you do. I don't think you guys sleep enough, but we'll find time for you after this is all over the sleep. So my question is related to the teachers being vaccinated. So Albany gave guidance related, I think, what was, was vaccinate the teachers, go back to school. So I guess what I'm asking, two things. One is, is, is the one is, has, have they given you a number that the target for, hey, we're looking to get 75% of all the teachers in a district vaccinated? And then the second part of that is, are you, I think this was a discussion, are you planning or thinking about having a, you know, a clinic, a mobile clinic come into the high school and say, anybody, any teacher and/or may pack district worker come in and get vaccinated? Because I know, I'm assuming that that is a, that's a rate, a target, the benchmark that they're going to keep on. So that's one question. Then I got another question about positivity rates.
So Ben, as far as a number specific goes, the state has not come out with something. Interesting enough, we've heard since last week, and it was reiterated again in one of the Lohut articles over the last couple of days, supposedly Dr. Zucker, the DO, you know, the state DOH doctor is supposedly coming out with some, you know, New York State guidelines, but has not as of yet. And I don't know if there'll be something to be determined there. It's interesting because the governor today, again, talked about teacher vaccines. And he's asking now, Ben, for the local Department of Health to develop, no, I'm being honest, to develop some type of a measure so that they can gather how many teachers have gotten vaccinated? Because I think they're looking at what that number is in each district. We are, and I've worked very closely, and I want to thank Tom McMahon, our MTA president. We have been in constant contact with one another. Tom has surveyed the staff and we had a conversation actually yesterday, Ben, at which point, you know, he shared with me, you know, it's much better along than we thought. And he said, Anthony, you know, we need about X amount of more teachers done and we're going to be really close. Immediately, Ben, I called up Shanna, I said, Shanna, here's our number. And then literally today, like I mentioned before, and Greg got it, we actually got appointments that we sent out so they can go locally and get it done. And because they're teachers, they would get that availability. So yes, yes.
So we're moving along and maybe within the next couple of weeks we'll get an update. Because I think that's definitely a critical piece.
Because to your point, Ben, right? If they're vaccinated, right? And after that, two weeks after they get that second dose, or I don't know what happens now with the other one, then, you know, they're okay. They don't have to get caught up in the, that's a big difference, right? So that's, that's the part of this that all flows in, so thank you.
Yeah, sure. And then the next question is, on your slide, you talked about positivity rates. Is it specific? It seemed from the slide that it's specific to the district.
Yes.
Not Putnam County, not Carmel, it's specific. So we're going to have our own little number.
So that's, there's going to be a release coming out, Ben, from the Putnam DOH in the next couple of days. So if you go onto the CDC website, it gives you like a chart of low, medium, and high. Once you get above that 5% number and you Once you get above that 5% number and you start approaching seven or whatever, you've gotten into a zone now where they're telling you, you gotta maybe scale back. But the D, the D O H is working on what that looks like. Because here's what's going to happen, Ben, and to your point, which has happened throughout this pandemic. Well, Mr. DeCarlo, um, you know, Brewster's is at 7%. Why is Mayapac at eight or nine? So the conversation we have with the county, and once again, I'm not an epidemiologist. I'm not a doctor. So I think the county wants to say as a county, because we don't want this to become widespread within Putnam County. I think they're going to work on a number, Ben, that's universal. So it applies to all the school districts and, and that's the cutoff. Exactly. Because otherwise, we're back to the same thing. Mr. DeCarlo, why did you pick 9%? And Brewster picked seven and Pup Valley picked eight. It's a lose-lose. And that's what's been going on all the time. So they're hopefully going to come up with what that number should be. And then as a county, we'll follow it. Now, the commissioner Zucker, right? Dr. Zucker, Ben, could come out next week and say, you know what? We're doing it by region. So the Lower Hudson region, if it goes to 7%, that's, I don't know. But I, 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 that's why, like I said to you, all this is targeted because things can literally change, as you know, Ben, from day, not week to week, but day to day. So.
All right. Well, I, I think, I mean, just get vaccinated. How's that? That's my, uh, P, uh, my P V A there, but public, uh, my, uh, public announcement there. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. President Mangan, thank you.
President Mangan, you're muted.
Yes, I am. Thank you very much. Let's go to trustee, thanks. Trustee Keen, Larry, come on. Tanner, you're up next.
Yeah, I, you know, this is the first time that any of us have seen this rollout plan. I, I, I would say that I'm more than a little disappointed in the space of time between the I E P students returning and the elementary students in fourth and fifth grade returning. It's at a month's difference in time. That's significant. Now, I understand that in that month, there is a week's worth of vacation. I don't really understand, okay, why it takes that long? Is it that we don't have enough shields? Okay, it can't be that, you know, if you have the desk, you know, we've got a week's vacation and those desks should be able to be moved out quickly. Okay. And into classrooms quickly. It's a long time, okay, for those I E P students in elementary school returning and our fourth and fifth graders returning.
So Larry, I'll have Greg talk to you a little bit of why the I E P kids are, are sooner and a lot of it.
I, I understand that. I, I don't have an issue with that.
Okay.
My issue is that the intervening time between the I E P students returning and our fourth and fifth grade students returning. To me, it just seems long.
Yeah. So in the conversations, Larry, first of all, you're right. It has to do with the supplies coming in, number one, right? Uh, because they had their, their order. You can imagine all of, all of the, you know, all the schools are looking for the same thing. So that, we've got a targeted date of it, that possibly coming in that week they were on vacation. We then have to put, you know, we have to, you're right. We can't put desks in those rooms before that, no question. But then we have to fasten them in. We got to put them on. And I go back to what I said, in, in conversations with the elementary principals who, who know their buildings, they wanted to do it in a rollout. They didn't want everybody to come back together all at once. So that's why you'll see some of that timeframe, the way that it is, based on us getting the barriers in, based on us being able to roll out the timeframe for students to be able to come back in. That was some of the reasoning behind it.
Okay. But the, the reason for, for weeks is we don't have material to bring them back. Okay. I, you know, it's the, the other stuff that was best to me, doesn't make any real sense. I mean, if we don't have barriers, we don't have barriers and you, you can't bring them back then. Okay? But if we have the barriers, okay, we should be able to do it more quickly than a month.
Can I speak to this a little bit?
Sure, sure, Sandra.
Great. So it took us all summer to dismantle the classrooms and then set them up that, that we needed to. And that was without barriers. So right now, all of the furniture that we took out of the classrooms is either in storage and dismantled. Right? So we have to run our schools on a regular basis with the students in the classrooms. So we're going to be just doing classrooms in each building on a continuous basis while we await the supplies to come in. But it's going to take us a significant amount of time to return all of the classrooms back to some semblance of order. And some classrooms won't be able, uh, say, depending on the number of students, we might have to move classrooms from one place to the other because one class has less students and another class has more students. So we, we have to do it. If we're, we're, the reason we need this time, one is, again, yes, we don't, we won't have those barriers and the supplies in. But we also need the time to be able to bring everything back in. And then we have to actually look at each classroom, well, how many students are going to be in that classroom? We have to map it out. We have to make sure it all fits. Now, I don't know if you remember what we talked about also. And no one likes my terminology, but I go with traditional and non-traditional. Traditional is desks one behind the other. In the elementary schools, there's a lot of classrooms that aren't that way. So then we have to figure out, one, how do we use the furniture that we have? Because getting more furniture i- is going to be a really tough thing to do. It usually takes when you order student desks, like two months at least to get new, new furniture in. Um, we are trying to get some, but we are going to have to figure out which furniture we can put in which room to get the proper spacing. So I know it sounds like it can be done really quickly, but it's not, it, it, there's a lot in this planning. And we're walking each building with the custodians, with the principals, with all the, uh, Greg, the, is Dr. Stoll, Mr. Tremblay, myself, um, Mr. Shore, we're, we're all going in and trying to figure out, and to Adam's point about specials, right? We, we're not sure yet. Do we need, do we need to use those? Some of those spaces are larger. Do we need to use those spaces because we have so many kids coming in? But we still have a requirement. When we map it out, we've used graph paper and mapped out some of those classrooms. But we can't just double the desks in there. It sounds like you can, but you can't. And again, it's not just desks.
I understand probably more than anybody, all of that issues. Okay. I'm just saying that it's too long. Okay. And that some of this could have been done ahead of time in anticipation of us coming back. Okay. And that's probably what should have been done. I mean, other schools are coming back. They're not taking a month to roll the people back in.
Maybe they didn't take all of their furniture out. We don't know what these schools did differently. You know, we don't know what these schools did differently.
So Larry, so Larry, at the end of the day, Larry, I mentioned this before, it's targeted. For some reason, Larry, if we are able to, and things move expeditiously and it makes sense to, to, to look at it and we could do it sooner, we, we can look at that, of course. I don't want, I don't want you to think that. If, like I said before, allowing the other kids to come in because of the fact that we have the availability in the room to do that, um, you know, we, we may be able to do that. And, you know, and the reason why we're not, we, we're doing it is we just found out that we could do the three feet to six feet. So, but to your point, Larry, sure. If for some reason things go better and we can get them in sooner, it makes sense, we're definitely open to looking at that.
Okay.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Larry. And yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, I think that, I think trustee Masafra and trustee, uh, uh, Keen make a, you know, make a good point. If there's any way to accelerate, you know, the, the process, I think, Anthony, to your, you know, to your point, you guys will take a look at it and see if we can make that, uh, you know, make that happen. So, um, thank you for that.
Just say something on that. Can I just say something on that? Um, so many of our parents spoke last Thursday. Um, people very eager to kind of help and volunteer. So I don't know if that has even been thought about, how there's something like that could be rolled out. Um, you know, this is a great community. Everybody wants their children back in. Uh, this, we could think out of the box of how we can use extra hands. Um, just putting it out there.
Yeah, I, I.
Listen, I, I think one of the things, I, I just, well, I, I'd like to just answer that, Miss Suffer, Miss Suffer. I think one of the things that we have to really still understand is we're still under guidance from the Department of Health, recommendations from our school district physicians. Um, a lot, we are going room by room with different furniture and mapping out foot by foot. I've done this myself. I will let you know, our building principals are working as hard as they possibly can to do this as quickly as they can. Um, it is, it is really painstaking work, room by room. We don't even know the exact number in our classrooms yet because the survey hasn't gone out and the parents haven't, you know. So if you're talking about section 303, Algebra I, in room 207, um, at the high school, we don't know how many kids will ultimately be in there. So we have to project out at the maximum, what is it? Then we got to look at the desk. We got to look at the configurations of the desk. So I'll give you an example. In the middle school, we have a desk that's four and a half feet law, uh, long, a rectangle one in the middle school in our science rooms. We can't get two kids at that seat and keep them three feet apart. So that, that whole setup in that classroom with those desks, we're going to have to swap those out with some other room and find another desk. So these are the small, intricate little things that take so long. We are not trying to slow roll this. I promise you that. We are doing it. But it is laboriously painstaking work because we can't just smoosh kids in. At minimum, we got to keep about three feet. That's the recommendation between each, between them. And it's just really complex. And, and I wish, we really tried to do this as quick as we could. Uh, we believe this is an aggressive timeline. Uh, as Mr. DeCarlo said, we will always relook at it. But we've been doing this work, uh, now for a couple of weeks. And, and I have to tell you that doing it myself with the principals, it's, it is, it is, it is tedious and, and they're working hard. Our principals are working extremely hard on it.
Just as a tangible next step, uh, after we successfully bring in the I E P students, we will then do room by room rock walkthroughs with the building principals again to make sure that we, and, and also looking at the numbers coming in, we'll do another walkthrough to look at each room. Now that it has six foot with more density of students in, what do we need to do to make specific adjustments to go to the, the newly clarified three feet, which, which again, was just clarified for us, uh, uh, along with the new clarification of barriers.
So, so just to the point of volunteering and, and, and we have to understand something. It's not normal. We're doing, we're in a COVID issue. Okay. And our policy clearly states there's no visitors. We got to be careful. It's not like before COVID where you can have people come in and, and, and do that. Um, so it's also the following, whether we like it or not, everybody, we can't take away union work. That's not just in schools. That's everywhere. So, you know, we got to be careful about that. So yes, correct. In the past, if we were during normal times, and you're right, Lucy, having people come and maybe help to volunteer with the playground or whatever, yeah. But now because we still have COVID and the pandemic is not over yet, our policy, of course, because of precautions, we have to, we have to also be sensitive to that. So, um, it's important to understand, um, as we move forward. Um, because those two issues I just mentioned to you have to be something that we have to make sure that we abide by and we follow.
Okay. Thank you. Yep. Thank you, Lucy. Thank you, trustee Masafra. Trustee McCracken, you're up. Go Tanner.
Thank you, President Mangan. And again, I will extend the thank you over to the superintendent, your entire team. And I will second what you said, Superintendent DeCarlo, about thanking the staff. Because a plan is just a plan. It's not action until you have such incredible dedicated staff like we have here in Mayapac. So I'm really pleased with this plan, really excited about it. There is one thing that I would actually prefer, and I was kind of upset about it, was the fact that we have plans to bring in six through 12 before K through five. And I know you laid out some of the reasoning. I would have preferred if the elementary school kids were in first and there's plans for that. My question is kind of specifically about that is, is it because of the arrival of the desk barriers? Is that one of the most, you know, one of the main factors?
Yes. Yes. It's been quick. Correct. Correct.
That and, uh, trustee McCracken, there, the, the classrooms are a little bit smaller, um, in the elementary school and the desks and setting everything up is actually a little bit more laborious because the middle school classrooms are bigger by square footage for the most part. Um, and also in, remember in the secondary, we can just hand out face shields and kids could get at it, right? In the elementary, we've got to affix to each individual student desk, those barriers once they come in. So it's more of a timing issue than it is like, we understand it's probably better educationally, get the young ones in, but we won't be ready for them. So that was really the reason.
Okay. And I know you probably mentioned it, but where are these, the, the desk barriers coming from? Where are we getting them from?
We're purchasing them. We're purchasing them from a company. We have gone through, um, all of their specs. We've sent them to our, our, um, regional safety specialist. He looked over the specs. Our architect has looked over the specs. So we have made sure that they are in full compliance. Um, but they are at least 20 business days out. Um, and we did not, you know, we, so that, that takes a little bit of time. And, and that's, there are barriers, you know, that they say, oh, yes, we can get them to you right away, but they don't meet the specs. So every time we thought we had one in hand, and then we go through the specs, there was one thing that we just, and, and we're not going to use them when they don't, they, we can't. We're not going to use something that doesn't meet those specs. Um, the, the other point, and I just wanted to let everybody know, on top of that, with these barriers, we know we need extra. Once they come in, we are going to bring people in to get them affixed to the desks. So though that, you know, the, there's things that some people can do and can't do, but we will be bringing in, we'll be using our, our labor, of course, our, our employees, but we will be bringing people for extra time once they come in. Because I can tell you that the sample that I received is covered on both sides, like with blue film, and they have to be affixed. So it's going, you know, it's going to take them time to put them on each one of the desks. But we are going to bring, once they come in, we will be bringing in extra staff to get those set up.
Okay. And thank you again, by the way, to all of you for the, for this plan. Really excited about it. So, and thanks for answering our questions. I yield back, Mr. President.
Thank you, Cracken. Um, who else? The other board members have a, have a comment? I didn't, I, I'm looking at the side of the screen over here. Okay. All right. Very good.
Trustee, trustee McDonough.
I didn't see, I, I didn't see him. Okay. Go ahead, Ray.
Muted.
Ray, you're muted, Ray.
You're muted.
She had a tough week.
Can you hear me?
Got you, Ray. Go.
All right. I just can't see you. Um, first of all, yes, thank you, everyone. And I'm kind of a guy that's safety first, and I do understand the logistics of something this great to get back. It's not like the pool's open, let's everybody come home, come in the pool here. There's, there's a rollout plan. And, um, I get involved with logistics where I'm at, and it's very important. And I'm just grateful that the kids will be able to get back to school. And thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, trustee McDonough. Anybody, and, uh, we have, uh, any other trustees have, have any questions if we're good? Okay. All right. So, so here's the good, the good news is, is that, uh, uh, with the relaxation of the restrictions and guidelines, the Board of Education, we, we really, we're looking forward to the resumption of live in-person Board of Education meetings. I've asked our superintendent to map out a plan for this, along with what those operating procedures might, you know, and, and could, wouldn't, could be. In addition, we look forward to a plan for the summer enrichment programs or camps that, uh, that Mr. Tremblay, uh, referred to, along with our, uh, with our other summer programs, as well as the school's reopening plan for September. September is going to be, September, I'll be honest, before you know it. So, uh, so the leadership team, uh, Mr. DeCarlo and his leadership team and administration have quite a bit on their plate. But, uh, you know, on behalf of the Board of Education and community, we have their, uh, we have the utmost respect and, uh, and hope that, uh, that, uh, we'll have this in for, uh, have this information in, uh, and you'll be working hard in order to get us back, uh, get us back, uh, full in, uh, for September and our enrichment program. So, uh, Mr. DeCarlo, you and your, uh, leadership team, uh, and administration, a big thank you. And, um, what I'd like to do right now is I would like to, uh, entertain a motion, uh, to, uh, to close the meeting for this evening. So moved? Thank you, trustee McCracken. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second, thank, thank you, uh, trustee Fafaro. All in favor? Thank you very much, everyone. Be safe, get vaccinated.
Thank you.
Good night. Thanks, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Be safe.
Good night.